Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting this February 20th, 2018. We have six of seven Planning Commissioners present with Commissioner Hanson excused this evening. The first item on our agenda is the consent calendar of approval of minutes from February 6th, 2018. If anyone has action he or she would like to take on that. Commissioner Quinney?
I moved that we approved the minutes from the last meeting as contained in the packet.
Thank you. Commissioner England?
I second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Quinney and a second by Commissioner England. Is there any discussion in the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously six to zero, which brings us to our first public hearing. Quick Quack Car Wash, 7824 South, 3800 West, Preliminary Subdivision Platte, Preliminary Site Plan, and Conditional Use Permit in an SC-1 Zone. Lone Star Builders Incorporated, Dallas, Hakes? Did I say that correctly?
Joseph Ernest for Dallas Hakes.
Okay, Hakes is the applicant, and Joseph Ernest is here on his behalf. You're welcome to come up and present your application.
So, a little Joseph Ernest here. Great, great to be with you. Want to start out by thanking staff. They've been awesome. We've got, we've come a long way to get to this point. And actually, well before we started working on the site plan and the subdivision and the Conditional Use Permit, the SC-1 text amendment was something that we helped to get through for then automated car wash on this, on this corner. To tell you, give you a little bit of context as far as Quick Quack, who we are, before you have the staff report. Quick Quack has 40 operational locations so far in Utah, Colorado, Texas, and California. And in Utah alone, we have nine. And we started in Utah, May of 2016. And we have 10 and 11 currently under construction. And we're, our goal is to do 40 here in Utah within the next three, four years. And it's just been tremendous working with the cities of Utah to get this accomplished. And as far as the, the corporate motto, and this may sound familiar to some of you guys, is be fast, be clean, be honest, be consistent, be accountable, become a leader, work as a team, show respect, work hard, and have fun. And we were fortunate to be awarded the best car wash by the Utah Valley Magazine in 2017 as we have so far the bulk of our, of our washes are in Utah County. As far as the report, I thought I would kind of walk you through the customer experience. I brought some images. I don't know how close they are in this staff report. So, some of the images, this is our Spanish Fork location. So, the customer experience, maybe I'll go back to the site plan. The customer experience, as you can see, probably the majority of the customers will turn in off of, off of 7800 and go to 3800 South. And they'll wind around and they'll come into our stacking lanes, which are right here. They'll, they'll queue and come into our stacking lanes and await to be greeted by one of our two employees that will be on site. And then they'll go through our, through our automated tunnel, which will soak and wash that car. The entire experience is three minutes. Some of the things that we're, we kind of, we pride ourselves on is our water conservation efforts. So, Quick Quack is part of the Water Savers Organization, which is an industry group committed to conserving water. We use on average 12 gallons of water per car. And that's after we reclaim and recycle as much as humanly possible, which is over 90% of the total. The reason that's significant is because if you're in your own driveway, you're going to use between 175 and 250 gallons of water washing your own car. That hose is going, it's, it's just, this is a, it's funny, but bringing an advanced technology car wash to West Jordan will conserve water even though the business is using water. That said, our shampoos are biodegradable and non-corrosive, and we have noise-reduced vacuums, and this is important. So, at this site here, without a doubt, 7800 South is going to be by far the loudest neighbor still, by a lot. So, I say, I can say that without any reservations on roads that have significantly less traffic than 7800 South. And so, in this case, these vacuum stalls, once our customers exit the tunnel, they have the option of coming into these vacuum stalls, and their, the vacuums are actually housed to, to limit the noise. And they have air compressors here that the customers can use, which are really nice to blow off the excess water. I use them on my dashboard, which is a cool little trick. Open both the front doors and spray off the dashboard, and it's just all the dust is out of that car. It's phenomenal. Other things I think are worth mentioning, and before I jump into the staff report, is the community involvement of Quick Quack. So, before I started working with Quick Quack, I was their, one of their first members in, at the Spanish Fork location, which was the first location. And I started seeing the Quick Quack Quackles Duck, is their mascot? Quackles the Duck? I started seeing this duck everywhere at the Spanish Fork High School. And, and they did fundraisers and whatnot in the community. But they, they provided 10 days of free car washes to the community after their grand opening, and that's when I went to the site. And unbeknownst to me, now I've learned, at every site after the grand opening, they provide 10 days of free car washes. And we've done that now. We've washed over 100,000 Utah cars for free, and it's been a phenomenal experience for everyone involved. In addition, prior to any grand opening, we kind of put our ear to the ground to find someone who needs some help in the, in the community, and we advertise that person who needs help, and we donate a day of car washes prior to the grand opening, and then for donations from the community to help that person in need, and then Quick Quack matches those donations. And it's been, it's been a tremendous experience to be part of a company that takes their community involvement farther than just talk. And, and so, for instance, in Highland, we were able to donate $10,400 to a senior at Lone Peak High School, a gal who has a rare form of cancer, primary children still doesn't know what form, and it's just, and at each location, we've had tremendous stories of helping. That said, it's, it's an exciting prospect to be potentially a commercial citizen of West Jordan. Dirk gave me a pin, a West Jordan pin that I wore tonight in hopes that we become commercial citizens, and we care about making sure our site is professional and clean, and that's what we'll accomplish with those employees on site. As far as the staff report, I've read through the staff report. Julie gave me 15 minutes ago a revised staff report. I've been told to talk about lighting and hours of operation. One thing on the Conditional Use Permit approval proposal by staff, the hours of operation are, is actually, and this is where I misspoke to Kent, and it's, so it's my fault, is our winter hours, let me go to it, is November through March, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And then the rest of the years, the rest of those seven months is going to, are going to be our summer hours of 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. So, I asked that we make that adjustment if you're going to approve our Conditional Use Permit, so that we're not hindered of our normal operations. And then as far as lighting, another thing that we do, which has been really helpful as far as become, being a good neighbor, is our lights are automatically turned off at 10:00 PM, all lights surrounding, surrounding the actual building. So, there's, our neighbors aren't going to have glare or whatnot, as far as if that's a concern. Just the building lights themselves and the, and the sign, there's a sign off the building that will still be lit up, and there's a sign on the building that will be lit up. And that's really important for us for security reasons as well, to at least have the building lit up. But all exterior lot lights are turned off. We tore down the houses at that site. That was a big deal.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We let the, I, the police department contacted me to ask to go in and train, and so did the fire department, and it was fun to let them through. The first K-9 officer was met by a transient living in the house with a knife. And, and it was a pretty, apparently a pretty scary experience, but they're trained. And ever since then, anyone who goes by needs a police escort to first clear out the houses. And we did do that prior to demolitioning the houses, which was a big deal. So, no one, no one should be hurt inside there now. Other than that, I want to, I want to make myself available for any questions. There was a letter, Julie Davis made me aware of a letter by Jordan Landing as far as traffic Kind of feel like a little David and Goliath situation here, although that's weird coming from me because I'm not a small human, so I don't get to usually make that analogy. But, but as far as the, the company itself, there's going to be, there, our traffic impact study engineer, our traffic engineer, per the report that you have, has confirmed that there aren't going to be any issues. And I can tell you, this site is bigger than even most that we do. We are completely self-contained at our, at our much smaller sites. So, we shouldn't have any issues, and per the traffic engineer, the traffic engineer has said we're not going to have any issues either. Also, in addition to just our site being self-contained, the actual widening and improvement of the intersection will also do a lot to improve the traffic flow into Jordan Landing. So, I don't, I don't anticipate us affecting or damaging them in any way, shape, or form. So, thank you for considering us tonight, and I'll be available for any questions you have.
Well, great, thank you. So, you mentioned the improved lighting plan. What about the east elevation architectural features to break up the facade that the Design Review Committee?
Great, yeah, so we're, oh, and, and, good. And I'll say another thing to that. So, on the east facade, as is right now, we have a utility room that comes off eight feet from the building that you can't see per the east elevation, and you can't really notice it. But that alone, eight feet by 60 feet, will do a lot to break up that east elevation. It shouldn't be an issue. However, like other staff recommendations that I've looked through, I don't have any problem with everything the staff has recommended thus far, pretty standard, easements, all of those things, I don't have any issues. And same with the, if the, if the utility room coming out and breaking up that, that facade isn't enough, I'm, we're happy to work with the city on whatever else they need.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Quinney?
Yes, thank you. First off, thank you for coming into West Jordan. We appreciate you. Just a clarification on that, because I was trying to write the notes. You said your winter months were through March, November through March?
November through March.
Okay.
7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Wanted to make sure I had that right.
Thank you.
Commissioner Green?
That wasn't my exact question, so I'm...
Commissioner Luthy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question's on the widening. What did we end up with, the actual widening of that road, that intersection?
I have it here in the staff report, so I'll just read it to you.
Can you point us to the page you're looking at when you see that?
Here it is.
What page are you referencing, please?
I, I just was recently given the recent one, so I'm going to reference the old one. And it's page five of the old one, under Finding B.
B as in boy?
Yeah.
Thank you.
The discussion is by Bill Beranowski, City Traffic Engineer, and he said, and I'll just, it continues, "The traffic study was performed at this intersection in September that included the proposed car wash. And then item number one, the new subdivision will widen the intersection and improve the sidewalks and the southbound through traffic, including moving the signal pole several feet on the southwest corner. They will, they will add a continuous two-way left, no, you, yeah, they will add a continuous two-way left turn lane along 3800 West along the site after the street is widened. And then two, the city will add a third lane on 7800 South in the eastbound direction and improve the 7800 South, 4000 West intersection to include double left turns in the westbound and eastbound directions. And then it said, 'We hope this change will improve access to Jordan Landing. This is part of the $6 million, 7800 South widening project between 4000 West and Airport Road Plan for 2018.' And then three, the new car wash traffic shows minor impacts to the existing intersection operations. The attached traffic letter is an update to the traffic study at this location."
Perfect. My second question had to do with the citizens that live in the area. They had kind of been at the early phases of this. Have you had any follow-up with them? Is there any concern on their part?
The follow-up I've had with them is our excavators, who also work in my office, have said the neighbors have come out and just gleefully, "Thank you for coming," and they're tearing down the home. And some of them have actually asked for property from the homes, and we've, we've actually just given property out. So, so, our interaction has been extremely great since then. And even at that time, our interactions were great. In fact, we had a lot of the citizens that were speaking on our behalf for the text amendment. Because, in lieu of a gas station.
Right.
Right. I don't know if that helped.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Free car washes and free property. Do you have any free money you're, you're giving now?
It's equivalent to money.
Okay, I like that.
My day is over yesterday. Always the answer is yesterday.
Commissioner Green?
So, my question is, we're also dealing with the preliminary subdivision, and I guess I'm concerned with the, the, the south end of the property.
West end?
Or, well, or west end. Yeah, west end. The, the, the piece of the property that's the .1 acre, do we, I guess I'm concerned that .1 acre's not really big enough to do much. Do you guys?
Are you talking about the, the entire lot?
Yes, I'm talking, I'm talking about the one, I mean, we're doing...
It's significantly larger than .1. Maybe I'm confused.
Isn't that what I saw?
It's almost an acre. Lot one, lot one should be almost an acre.
That changes the conversation.
Okay. Because I, oh, I read, I read 1.010.
Yeah, we can't sell that site at, at .1. That means, we would just incorporate it into ours at that point.
That's what I was concerned with, and I can see where I saw, missed the one was part of the parentheses. Okay, I'm good then.
No problem, yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant? We'll save you some time if there's anything else that needs to be addressed after the public comment section.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Page, you have this for the city?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I think it's important to remember this, or, these are three applications. The first being a preliminary subdivision platte, the second being preliminary site plan, and the third being a Conditional Use Permit. And it's helpful to remember this is in a neighborhood shopping center zone. So, whatever we approve here should have these substitute conditions that are conducive to a, to being a good neighbor, such as you having a six-foot-high wall along the south property line. We've encouraged the applicant to work with the neighbors, to have an attractive wall to their liking, with a reason. Staff has looked at, worked with the applicant quite a bit. There are a few outstanding issues that we need to rectify before we go to the final platte approval. The first being there's an easement in lot number two that needs to, we need to receive written verification that that has been taken care of, vacated, and no longer needed. There's also an easement that's needed by our engineering department in the northwest corner of lot number one. And then there's a, currently an existing easement 10-foot wide owned by Utah Lake Canal Company that's going through lot number one. And our master transportation plan calls for an alternative transportation route right in alignment with that Utah Canal alignment. So, those are issues that we see that are, I guess, the biggest ones to address. Other than that, you know, reasonable conditions of hours of operation, you know, the lighting, we would want a licensed engineer to certify that it meets our lighting requirements. I'm happy, I'm happy to hear that they're planning to turn off most of the lights at 10:00 PM. And we would encourage them to work with trash removal, so that is being done at a reasonable hour and not detrimental to the neighbors. So, with, with that, I could try to address any particular questions you might have. And we have our Bill here from our traffic engineering, and Nate from our city engineering, and our fire department Pauls here to address the particular questions you might have.
Well, thank you very much, yes, and thanks for mentioning all three. But we've got two, well, I guess all three of them are administrative, where we have the final decision as a Planning Commission, right? Conditional Use Permit, Preliminary Subdivision Platte, and Preliminary Site Plan. And yes, we'd love to hear from the traffic, our traffic guru, Bill, especially given that most of the topics have come up in either written form or in conversation, deal with transportation in that congested area. Is there anything that you'd like to add relative to what the applicant or Mr. Page has given in terms of traffic concerns?
Yes, I'd like to just say a couple items. This project's a great improvement to the corner, on the southwest corner. The biggest improvements are going to be for the pedestrians using 78 South will have a park strip and a wide sidewalk, and at least a 10-foot clear zone. Before, we didn't have a clear zone, and the snowplow going down the street would wipe out that fence on a regular basis. Same thing on 38 West, we're going to have a nice park strip and sidewalk, landscape side, park strip. That will also be set back from the street, providing good access for pedestrians. But the, probably the biggest impact is widening 38th West to provide at least a 17 feet of asphalt for cars turning left from 78 South or right, I'm going westbound, and then eastbound going, making a right turn into the site. There will be some impacts from the right in, right out on 78 South to the site, and that will be mitigated by the striping of a new lane that's proposed eastbound, where currently there's a painted shoulder. So, there's, there's a little bit of, there's good news and bad news. There will be some traffic going in and out of this site on the 78 South. And my, my comments also mention some improvements we're planning to the west. It'll help Jordan Landing. We really want to do whatever we can to make Jordan Landing work better, especially the left end from the east, for traffic going eastbound.
Great, thank you. Additional questions for staff? Commissioner Luthy?
Yes, so on the, because they're two separate lots, but they've got a shared access, will the access off of 78th itself be put in as a part of this original, so there will be a swath? Okay. But the rest will remain on?
Can we build it? From that, from that access all the way over?
To your property, and the rest will just remain untouched until you have it built. Perfect, thank you.
And let's see, we've got a six-foot-high masonry wall being constructed between the residential property to the south, but could, could you clarify where, is it going to be a six-foot-high fence around the entire property? Because that, that vinyl fence there, as was mentioned, it just turns into a war zone. It just gets...
It's just a buffer, six-foot-high fence along the southern property line where there's residential property.
So, what about the, what about the fencing? What type of buffer besides the landscaping will, will there be along 7800 South? Is there going to be anything? I'm assuming there's not going to be anything, it's just going to be the, the landscaping space?
Well, there's, there's really not a buffer. There'll be a landscaped area, and so the minimum would be a 10-foot yard in the front. And so, when we refer to buffer, that's between different intensity of uses. And there'll be a 20-foot landscape buffer between the parking lot and the residential properties to the south. Now, there will be landscaping along 7800 South and along 3800 West, so it'll look attractive, but there won't be any wall other than, the only wall will be between the residential property. Try to keep the commercial properties open.
Sure, visible.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Quinney?
Yeah, I'm just, was looking through the packet here. Is there going to be any kind of fence along the canal for when that other building goes in eventually?
Derek, so there's...
Come up to the mic.
Could you please come up to the microphone? Thank you. I don't know if this answers your question, but I've been to the site a couple times, and, and there's currently a really nice high-end rock masonry-type concrete wall that, that will divide lot one and the adjacent office buildings, and it already exists. So, I don't know if that answers that.
Just as long as there's something there, that's all I want to know.
Well, and the canal will be covered to...
Oh, okay.
So, it'll, it'll be box covers on top of it.
Oh, so they're covered.
Yeah, I missed that, probably missed that from the packet, okay.
So, you could, they'll be actually, be able to park on top of the canal.
Okay.
Well, that answers that question, thank you.
Great, thanks. Commissioner Green?
Don't go away. I have a new question. Might as well ask it. About how many car, about how many cars a day go through this car wash?
Oh, it's going to be 200 to 300 a day.
Commissioner Hatch?
Thank you, Chair. Did I miss public parking or parking spots for employees, or where, where are we putting people?
If you can see the ADA symbol there, there's a parking stall right there, and then there's, there is also the, all the vacuum stalls I think could be used as parking, but we will only have two employees maximum on site.
For 200 to 300 cars a day?
You got it. So, it's all automated. It's all automated. They'll greet, they'll greet the customer, take their car wash order, and then guide them through, and, and they...
So, pardon my ignorance, but I've been to the car wash on 70th South on east of I-215. I don't know what it's called, but...
If it's not a Quick Quack, it's probably awful.
Yeah, well, it doesn't count. But my experience there, it was massive congestion getting in and off of 70th, off of the car wash. It's on the north side of 70th. And I don't know, 78th is as, as busy street as 72 there. But how, I mean, I just can't imagine 200 to 300 cars a day in this street. So, I guess that's traffic issue, but it's just, to me, it seems...
Maximum of three, there are three minutes on site, actually, and then they use the vacuum stalls.
And they could take forever there.
Yeah, they can. And as far as the number we have, those will never fill up, not even close. And as far as the, I know you almost have to take my word for it, and the traffic engineer's word for it, which is good. You don't take mine, you take the traffic engineer's. But again, this site is bigger than most of our normal sites, and even our smaller sites, you do not have traffic backup issues unless it's 10 days a week.
Well, it's a good problem to have, but unless you're on 78th South.
I would like to, but we would have to exceed our economic expectations dramatically, which would be awesome, but I don't anticipate us having any issues at all.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Luthy?
Just to set your mind to ease, the one on 90th and 22nd has a very similar line to go through, and even during the hot summer days, it's not congested. Yeah, it flows great the entire time.
Great. Any other questions for staff and/or the applicant? All right. Well, we'll open up the public comment section if anyone would like to speak on this item. To start it off, I'd like to acknowledge that we are in receipt of a letter written by William Gross, President of Foursquare Properties. And in our conversation with the applicant and city staff, I believe that we have addressed every item of concern in the letter. Have I missed anything to any Planning Commissioner's knowledge? Want to make sure that we give respect and acknowledge whether people are here in person or via written comment. Would anyone else like to speak on this item?
I'll wait till we close the public hearing.
We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Green?
So, the one thing I will point out here, and, and this is why I'm not going to put a lot of credibility in the letter from Foursquare, is that when we dealt with the text amendment that'll allow car washes in the SC-1 zoning, because I believe that's what we did the last time, was the text amendment that allowed the car wash to go here, was noticed as a public hearing, and it was obvious that the car wash was going to be here. And so, when they sit, when they talk about the original site plan was processed as a fast-food drive-through or large retail building, that was when we zoned it. Subsequent to the zoning, we had a text amendment to the, a text amendment to that zoning that allowed this, and the Quick Quack Car Wash people, I can't say that three times, by the way, very fast, they were here and discussed the car wash. And so, the car wash has always been part of the discussion the last several ones, and I want to make sure that we were clear on that.
Thank you. And I'm grateful that lights will be turned off, and there'll still be safety lights, but the water reclamation, I mean, that's wonderful, trying to conserve our, our resources. Other thoughts, commissioners? Commissioner Green?
I'm going to add one more, and that's the, we're, we're talking about 7800 South and, and that intersection, what is it, 3800 West? Any improvement to that intersection right now is a drastic improvement. And the ability that we have to add the turn lanes and move the light pole... And the ability that we have to add the turn lanes and move the light pole and make that intersection a normal intersection over what we've had, what we have now, is, is a much-needed improvement to that intersection. I'm, I also, I also believe that, yes, there will be two or three hundred cars going through there every day. I think that the way that they've got the, the Disneyland queue line that comes in and, and goes around, and, and you enter the car wash, car wash from the, the south and go north, I think there's plenty of space for the cars to, that we, we're not gonna see a backup. But I have to tell you, I'm not sure that I'm gonna, that we're gonna see as many cars coming through Jordan Landing as Jordan Landing claims. I think that a lot of the people are gonna be people who are gonna be going, personally, when I go to a car wash, unless I'm going there for a destination, it's an impulse thing, and you like to do the, the easy thing, which is right in, right out. You go, you know, you're gonna pull in as you're going to work, and I imagine that's what you're, you're hoping with the eastbound traffic on Seventy-Eight Hundred South, that I don't see a lot of traffic going across that intersection, unless somebody's coming from that far end of the other side of Jordan Landing, I just don't see them coming down Campus Drive to come to, to come to, to a car wash. And in fact, if I, I, if I lived on the other side of Jordan Landing, I'd get on Bangater and drive down and around because I wouldn't wanna fight all the stop signs on Jordan Landing. So I, I, I'm, I just don't think that, that it's gonna impede any traffic in Jordan Landing, and it's gonna cause any impact at all.
Good point. This is a subscription service too, though, so good point on impulse, but, but also there are memberships sold, is that correct? Like on a monthly basis, so, so it could be someone of a destination. Commissioner Quinney?
I was just getting ready to make a, make a motion unless Commissioner...
Commissioner Luthy, do you have a comment? Okay, Commissioner Quinney, please.
So, yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't be more excited to get this thing done as quick as we can, so let me make these motions here. So the first one, based on the findings set forth in the staff report, upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move the planning commission to approve the preliminary subdivision plat for Quick Quack Car Wash, located at the southwest corner of Seventy-Eighth South and Thirty-Eighth Hundred West, subject to the conditions listed on page two.
Second?
A motion by Commissioner Quinney and a second by Commissioner Luthy? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously six to zero. Commissioner Quinney?
Based on the findings set forth in the staff report, upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move the planning commission to approve the preliminary site plan for Quick Quack Car Wash, located at the southwest corner of Seventy-Eighth Hundred South and Thirty-Eighth Hundred West, subject to the conditions listed on page two.
Thank you. Commissioner Luthy?
Second?
And let's discuss, starting with Mr. Page.
So I'd just like to clarify that the preliminary site plan is just for Lot Two. So where Quick Quack will be, so...
Did we miss?
No, I just wanted to make sure that it was specified, it's just for the one of the two lots, just for Lot Two as a site plan approval.
So should we make a...
I'll get it.
Okay, thank you.
So the amendment that it's on page three, and this is only for Lot Two.
Great, thank you. And Commissioner Luthy?
Second? Second?
Great, thank you. Discussion, additional discussion? Well, let's vote, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously six to zero. And going for the triple header, we have Commissioner Quinney.
Based on the findings set forth in the staff report, and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission approve a conditional use permit for Quick Quack Car Wash, located at the southwest corner of Seventy-Eighth Hundred South, Thirty-Eighth Hundred West, subject to the conditions of approval listed on page four of the staff report, with the one amendment as requested, that, that hours for the winter month of seven to seven be applied November through March, not through April.
Thank you. Commissioner Luthy?
Second?
A motion by Commissioner Quinney, second by Commissioner Luthy, discussion to this motion? Seeing none, all in favor? One moment, Mr. Page?
Just for clarification, on the preliminary subdivision plat, Lot One is on the left, but on the site plan, Lot Two is on the left side, so for the site plan purposes, we want to mention it's for Lot One, not Lot Number Two, so sorry for that confusion, but it's numbered differently from the subdivision to the preliminary plat, preliminary site plan.
Good point.
I think you're okay with the motion you made, because we're not gonna have two quick quacks right to each other, unless, if we do, so you're fine.
Mr. Leneris, anything that we need to specify on that? Okay. Thank you. Great, so we have a motion by Commissioner Quinney and a second by Commissioner Luthy. Again, any discussion to that motion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously six to zero, with the hat trick, you're approved. Thank you for doing business in West Jordan and clearing up a troublesome area, and hopefully that'll help the surrounding neighbors and businesses, and we believe that's the highest and best use for the property at this point in time. Thank you very much.
When do you anticipate it being up and running?
Depends how quickly we get that building permit. Building, the building department has already approved our architecturals, and so we use the final site plan approval. Once we have that, West Jordan will be the next groundbreaking. We have Centerville Providence will be after Orem and Provo, and then, so we're probably a few months from commencement of construction, and then we have a hundred-day build, build schedule, so it'll be spring, spring next year, spring, no, yes, spring. What month is it?
This would be February.
I'm losing track for a year, I'm telling you, so it'll be, it'll be towards the end of the year.
Well, great, thank you. Say hi to Quackles for us. All right. Brings us to item number three on the agenda this evening, text amendment, scheduled to be continued to March sixth, two thousand eighteen, to amend the two thousand nine city code, section thirteen dash thirteen, landscape requirements, adding requirements for landscaping adjacent to future and existing arterial streets with citywide applicability. City of West Jordan is the applicant. Mr. Gardner, any additional information you'd like to mention?
No, just need a motion to continue.
Thank you.
I move that we continue that particular agenda item.
Commissioner England?
I second that.
A motion by, oh, thank you, yes.
March sixth.
Thank you. Would that work for you, Commissioner England?
I second that, correct.
Thank you very much. So a motion by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner England. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's please vote, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously six to zero, bringing us to our final item on the agenda, informational cap and grade review for two thousand seventeen with Mr. Gardner.
Okay, and so I don't know how many new commissioners were, this was passed a little over three years ago, the cap and grade, after a process of a moratorium the, the city went through, because they were worried about the amount of multifamily that was being discussed in the city, and the city council at that time felt that there was an adequate amount of multifamily in the, in the city, and so they chose to pass a cap and grade ordinance, and others read you what the purpose is, says the comprehensive general plan supports a housing ratio, ratio of eighty-three percent single-family to seventeen percent multifamily, and that's what is known as the general plan ratio. Notwithstanding the general plan, the city establishes a ratio of seventy-seven percent single-family residential to twenty-three percent multifamily residential for purposes of this section. And I can honestly say with what has been built in two thousand seventeen, we got absolutely no closer to that ratio. Now, as the planning commission may be aware, when, before the moratorium was put in place a few years back, there was a, quite a number of, well, I shouldn't say quite a number, but a few projects that were, had application made before the ordinance change was in effect. And when I mean quite a number, most of them were very large projects. I think the smallest one was two hundred and seventy units, and of course, Jordan Valley TOD is out, is exempt because it's in a transit-oriented development overlay, but the view was five hundred and thirty-five units, and then Gladstone is a little over three hundred and something units, and so there's some very large projects that were approved now. And so I'll just quickly go through this, and then in two thousand, as you can see in two thousand sixteen, three hundred and forty-six permits were sold for single-family, and in two thousand seventeen, about three hundred and seventy-nine. The city for the last three or four years has been averaging the, between the mid-to-high three hundreds on single-family dwelling. That seems to be about what the city's building at this time. I've looked back, you know, in the early two thousands, they were building seven, eight hundred, as most of the cities on the west side of the, or southwest side of the valley were, but nobody's building to that level anymore. And you probably remember some of the overbuilding that went on and, and what happened because of that in the United States at that time, and so the city's averaging, you know, if anyone asks you, how many single-family homes are being built in West Jordan, oh, it's about three hundred, three hundred and fifty, and I, I see us maintaining that pace, you know, if the dam don't break and the water don't rise for the foreseeable future, because they seem to be rarely, the developers and builders seem to be very conscious of not creating a lot of product they don't already have sold, because that can, because, quite frankly, a lot of it's very expensive anymore too. It's, it's getting very, very difficult to build spec homes that you don't have a, what you have to have is a large, a lot of cash, and a lot of them don't like to operate in that way, and so a lot of them are being pre-sold, and then the people are waiting to have their home built. And so, you know, with the projects we've got in the queue, you know, the, the Perry Homes and a few others, I anticipate probably in the three hundred, three hundred and fifty single-family. Now, as far as multifamily, you can see in two thousand sixteen, thirty-eight units were added to the inventory of the city, but in two thousand seventeen, you can see that ramped way up to four hundred and sixty-four, and that is a direct result of the, not only the Jordan Valley TOD, Jordan Valley TOD probably in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen really wasn't a, the biggest builder of, of apartments at that time. They had some in two thousand seventeen, but they will be in the next year, you know, they'll have a couple of more three hundred unit buildings, but like I said, they're outside of the, the purview of the cap and grade ordinance, but a lot of those, four hundred and sixty-four are stationed at Gardner Mill, the view at Fifty-Six Hundred West, and then Gladstone is just coming online now with the first hundred units of their multifamily, and so what I do expect on the multifamily is for it to hold probably in the, the three hundred unit range, but that really isn't a cap, because there, there's no new projects coming in multifamily-wise, because they can't, we don't have any place for them to go unless there's something that is being developed within the transit-oriented development, which there's not at this point. The only thing that's being built in the TOD is Jordan Valley TOD, and as I said, they've got probably about fifteen hundred more units to put in there before they get done. And so the first bullet point, and so there has not been a new vesting of multifamily, and that's outside of the exempt area. Now, I wanna say with, with projects like the Jensen Project, and there could be some larger projects a little bit north of, well, west of Mountain View Corridor, and a little bit north of what is the Oaks or the Sycamores out there, there's some eighty, hundred-acre pieces of property. Now, when they get to the eighty-five acres, then there's an exemption put in that seventeen percent of the project can be multifamily. And what that translates in West Jordan is either townhomes or twinhomes, because they have to be, they have to be owner-occupied though, so now that could be rental. All the stuff we're dealing with now is all rental projects, and so you will see more multifamily, but it'll be just in much larger developments, and the much larger projects don't tend to cause the issues that the smaller twelve-plexes and that type of thing that were built years ago seemed to cause with police calls and, and, you know, not looking good. And so there are currently twenty-five hundred and thirty-six vested multifamily units, and these units are permitted to be built unless the conditions of their specific approval expire. What I mean, what that means is if they, most of them are phased projects, and if they, if they don't choose to get their final approval on a phase, I do not see that happening, I just do not see it happening. If built, and so if all of these twenty-five hundred units are built, then the multifamily stock in the city increases to eleven thousand and forty-six units. So that's, when this is built out, that's the multifamily that West Jordan will have, so, and like I said, the larger projects will, will probably end up between twelve and thirteen thousand multifamily units. And so what this last, last few bullet points just is some information. It tells you if, if we build out the same, if we build at the same rates we are now, so three seventy-nine will take twenty-five, twenty-nine years to achieve the seventy-seven, twenty-three. Two hundred will take fifty-five years, three hundred, thirty-seven years, and if five hundred, it'll take twenty-two years, so realistically, you know, I think that this is, with this ordinance in place, it is, it is achieving what the city council wanted it to do, is, is swung the pendulum back to war, towards a single-family. Now, whether that continues in the future, I don't know, that'll be up to the policymakers, but as, as of now, that's, that's my report, and if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them the best I can, so.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Commissioner Luthy?
I do have a question. How do we compare to other cities around us? Do you know that information? Mostly in the new stuff that's being built. So you listed how many were built for single-family and how many were built for apartments?
Yeah, I think multifamily-wise, South Jordan's probably a little higher, but that's just because of daybreak. You know, I looked at, I get noticing of all their projects, and I looked at one of their plats today, and I think the largest lot in the suburbs, it was a little over four thousand square feet, and so they're really packing it in at daybreak.
Yeah.
I've talked to the planner at South Jordan, and, and that's been so controlled by Kennicott Land, they don't have a good, adequate number on how many multifamily units are in there. So I think South Jordan is probably exceeding what we're building in multifamily and single-family now. Riverton, I pretty much is on the cusp of being built out as far as single-family goes. They will have some multifamily in that new, the project that the church owns off of Bangater or that, they're gonna make it kind of a Farmington Station-type development. You know, Harriman, you know, I think that they're building a little more multifamily than they were at one time, and so I think that we're probably, we're, we're certainly not the higher end in the cities, the five cities on the west side, and so we're, we're coming back into more of a, you know, single-family would be really the driving force in the city for the future, and so...
Are we building more homes here than most of the others, or are we on the lower end?
With the exception of South Jordan.
Okay.
South Jordan's one of the, that, that is, of course, associated by and large with daybreak, is that they're just, they're just putting a lot of product out there, but, you know, when daybreak was launched several years ago, their ultimate build-out, there was fifteen thousand units, and they're nowhere close to that, and so they, but they extend clear to the, almost to the mine, so they've got a lot of territory to cover, so...
Well, great, thank you. Anything else for this evening?
No, I was just gonna say on this particular thing that it, I think that this, this just points out, and allows us to focus what we, what we need to do as we, as we look at these projects, and I, I think this is a, this was long, long coming for the city that we paid attention... paid attention, we finally paid attention to this and just didn't put a bunch of multifamily housing everywhere we turned.
Great, thank you. And a reminder, on the fifth Tuesdays in May and October, we have the joint Planning Commission-City Council meeting, and is there a motion to adjourn? Great, thank you. Commissioner Hatch, any opposition? We stand adjourned until March sixth.